Now, I don't know who's there now.
We're doing good. How you doing?
Doing good.
Good, good.
I think it's his sister.
Oh, yes ma'am.
Or aunt or something.
Well, I know his niece and her husband are the ones that.
What do you think about the gate that they're putting at the center?
It's some relative. Cam was telling me it's a relative of his. I can't remember if she told him it's the sister aunt or niece. It could be something like that.
I think it's probably niece because when I saw her last night from a distance walked in on the farm. She's a younger.
Yeah.
Yesterday I walked to church.
It pretty well is now. The gate is gonna be electronic.
It's gonna do. And.
That's fantastic. It is.
Man was out there and he spoke to.
They've done such a good job.
Well, I stopped because the dogs were running at.
It's the guys that keep the center.
And I can't run anymore.
Brett, his name was Brett.
And I stopped. He said, they won't hurt you. They won't jump.
Brett?
I said, don't tell me that. And I said, they run at me every day.
They always say that.
And that they're out every day, all day long, barking and howling. And they're good shawaways.
Yeah, they're little dogs.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're.
They got a lot of fire.
Yeah.
They're good workers.
Well, I know one of them attacked Christie today. Right after they moved over there.
Yeah. When they were out there with those white things.
I don't know what's going on.
The first, first day they didn't wear them and they went and got them. I walked down there and I said, have you got your, got the cameras out or are we safe?
Now, that piece they had out there where they had the garbage out by the road. Well, they moved it, you know, they moved it out of the easement.
Yeah.
Well, now, they still got the metal part, but now they put a wooden deal around it. And it's just overflowing everywhere. I don't know.
Well, the little fence is gone that they had before.
Yeah.
I got on to him about that, so I'm glad to see that go.
Yeah, it, it looks a lot better.
Yeah.
And I don't know what they're doing to that carport. They've enclosed most of that carport.
Right.
Which I don't care. They do what they want to. That's their place.
Yeah.
But just keep it clean. I don't need rats everywhere.
Yeah. Got ready to start?
Yes, sir.
How are you? How are you hanging in there?
So, I think last time we talked about a couple of ordinances and stuff, I was gonna check on. I think one had to do with chickens, um, things like that. So, what I found, surprisingly, is that there's an ordinance on just about every animal. They've got a long list of them. Basically, it's that they're a nuisance. Well, define that for me. You know, I don't. Is it for me to make that determination? Is it? Is it for the, the neighbors? I mean, it, it was one of those that I was really kinda looking at that policy or that ordinance and thinking. I'm about vague, which a lot of times you get into those vague ordinances and policies. And it's real frustrating because where do we draw a line? Is it, is it X, Y, and Z? Is it A, B, C? I mean, what is, um, a nuisance to one may not be to another. And so, it's one of those. It's years ago, we had loud noise ordinances. What's loud noise? Finally, they put a decibel level on it. So then you can define it. Say, this is what it can't be above seventy-three decibels or eighty-two decibels, whatever. So that's what's frustrating is that sometimes some of these laws are written, and it's not just ordinances for the city. It could be state laws that are vague and unenforceable almost. So, um, so I didn't have a lot of luck on that. As far as, I think we talked about speed and stuff, their tickets are way up. Uh, I think we wrote three hundred twenty-one tickets last month. Uh, when I started here in July, that month, we wrote fifty-four. So, um, there's been a distinct change on that. Um, I think even I just checked a while ago for this month. We still got, what, a week and a half or so, maybe more, to go. And we're at a hundred and eighty-fiveish or so. So, probably finish somewhere around the three hundred mark, most likely. Depending on rain, depending on weather, depending on, you know, we got holidays. You got things that we don't usually do a lot on that day. So, I mean, it's. Saying all that, a lot of speeding, a lot of this. We're trying to focus most on the highway, but I still try to keep fifteen to twenty percent in town. I got a video the other day, well, about two weeks ago, on a four-wheeler that was going down West Avenue, pretty high rate of speed. But I can't identify the four-wheeler often. I can tell it's a four-wheeler, but I can't tell who's on it. And it was at seven thirty at night. So, all I'm getting is a blur in the.
Sorry, do you feel like that unlocked, the thing's still not working? I can't, I can't get it.
I'll try to, I'll try to mess with it.
Okay. Or I can lock it, go out the back, whichever you want to do it. Are you pulling back in for any reason?
I wouldn't blame it on it.
I'll go like about the back.
Okay, alright. Thank you. So, um, anyway, so trying to keep some enforcement. And on that particular one, I'm still waiting on my shirts, checking at night. I'm giving him a couple of weeks to kind of. Because I don't think it was unique to, I think it was on West Avenue. I don't think it's unique to that street or Cross Main or anything. I think there's a general issue with the four-wheelers and things like that. In fact, that conversation came today. Is a four-wheeler the same as a side-by-side? I argue that it's not. Because a side-by-side can be street legal. A four-wheeler cannot be street legal. So, and we're working through that. So, that's a, I'd say ordinance that is under consideration with the city right now. Uh, we're giving a lot of time for feedback on that. What I have proposed and written, and it's there for anybody to read, it is to have all of the, uh, the side-by-sides, four-wheelers, whatever, UTVs, ATVs, all have to show that, uh, who the owner is that's come in and registered with the city. They'll give you given a sticker. It'll be an annual permit, basically. They have to show a license, insurance, address where it's gonna be stored. And we want a plate on it. I don't know that they're gonna give you a plate at DPS for a four-wheeler, but they will for an ATV and golf cart. So you can get a little plate that will identify that vehicle. Um, and it's like a registration. But it gives us a little more idea of who's operating here legally and illegally. Uh, did put a restriction, uh, that can't operate on streets that go more than thirty-five miles an hour. That's out of safety because a lot of those won't go much faster than forty or fifty miles an hour. If you get out here on seventy-seven and with no lights on it, uh, somebody's gonna hit them. So, I'm trying to do that. Think a look at it. If you can do at least thirty-five and stay on a thirty-five run, you're probably gonna be okay. So, um. But we're working through that. So, that's something that's still, um, I know the mayor's still considering that. Waiting on more feedback, uh, from the citizens. We've had several ask about the insurance being required. And, uh, so it's pretty standard. I know some people have already done it. Uh, they already did it before we even considered it. So, I know it's possible and it's something that's not that crazy. But it would allow a little more of a, with all the complaints we get on, on them hauling down the road here, at least we would know who's what and kind of identify who the problem is. The other thing is the cat issue. So, I have been meeting with these folks. So, it looks like it's a go. I just have to see how we're gonna come in with volunteers. I've got one or two that have, uh, spoken to me about volunteering. So, we'll see. Um, we'll leave it up for another couple of weeks and probably start this maybe first of the year. I get it set up where we're doing, we're gonna start small, like four to six cats. For about two to four weeks. You know, one time for, you know, a few weeks and then do it again and then start picking up the pace a little bit as we get further along into it in the spring. So, we'll probably have to dance with the weather a little bit. So, I'll be watching that. So, try to maximize when we're gonna do it. I've got one involved here that says, you tell me how many you want and I'll get them trapped. I'm like, well, I, I wouldn't want more than six at a time because the vet is gonna cut me a deal for so many, you know. I said, so it's, he doesn't want me to bring thirty cats to him. That's, it's gonna, you know, too much for him. Uh, so, he's, he's gotten us a pretty good deal as a city. So, we're gonna try to keep it low and slow for the first month or two. And we'll pick it up a little more as we go through. So, I think it'll be a good program once we get it rolling and get organized a little bit on it.
What municipality is he in?
Who? The, uh, the vet?
Uh-huh.
He's out of Joshua. They have one in Hillsborough, the same guy. They operate on just, uh, the, I think it's the first. I think it's the first Tuesday of the month.
That sounds right.
I think, yeah, but on Joshua, they're there every day. So, it doesn't matter what day I bring them. So, I'm kinda leaning to go into the Joshua location. Depending on, you know, what if we decide to do it on a Thursday? Well, we will have to go to Joshua anyway. So, if we do something other than just the one first Tuesday of the month, we have to go to Joshua. So, it's, the Hillsborough location only gives me one day a month. So, hit or miss, the weather's not great. I don't wanna wait two or three months if we just keep missing that date. So, Joshua will probably be the location that we'll use. And it's TCAP. Uh, it's a Texas Coalition of, um, Animal Protection. So, they provide services and things that are very low cost. And so, they spay and neuter and all that. And since the city's footing the bill, we're trying to keep that cost down as much as we can. So, um, I got a quote from one vet in Midlothian and it was like, uh, a hundred and sixty bucks a pop. And I'm like, I don't think so. So, because you figure if you're gonna bring them, let's say, four to start with. Uh, you're talking six, seven hundred dollars. Whereas this one over here in Joshua is saying he can do it for twenty-five to fifty. Fifty would be if they had a disease or if they were pregnant. So, it's a little more involved. But if it's a stray, it's spayed, neutered, it's twenty-five bucks. And that includes a rabies shot. So, it's like, I think we'll do that. I wanted to save us a little bit of money because I'm thinking two hundred dollars a month, less a month. And we can do about six cats, uh, to start with. And so, and then we can start to get this rolling after, after we get through the, using the bad weather, what, January, February? So, um, we get this rolling hopefully about, get a lot of it done about the heat.
Does, does the cost of that come out of your funds, the police department's funds or?
No, it comes out of this regular city budget fund. So, we, we talked about it and, whenever I got the quote of like a hundred and sixty, I just said, we're not gonna do that. I mean, because, now, he had one, he had one thing going for him that I liked is that he kept the cats overnight. Whereas this place does not. And I've been warned that that can be a detriment to some cats depending on their level of, uh, toxicity on the, on the medicine they're getting. The way that person explained it to me was that, you know, think about when you have surgery. Are you ready to go out and do a whole lot the night after you've had a surgery? Maybe not. But you may be okay. It just depends on how you felt. I might be able to go to, you know, go do something. I may not be ready to go run a marathon, but I might be able to get up and walk around the house and, you know, do what I need to do. So, I think it just kinda depends. And that's all individualized to that particular animal. And I won't know that. So, that's why this doctor in Midlothian suggested keeping them overnight. Uh, and he would do that. Well, that was part of his fee. Uh, that's a lot of, you know, and I know you have to feed them at night, you know, keep them like that. So, that was gonna, those are all cost factors I had to look at. For what he could do one cat for, we could have, you know, four to six, maybe six of them treated by this place. So, it's kinda like, it's almost a no-brainer, uh, for budget reasons. And they're getting the same treatment. It's just, uh, lower cost. This place works with municipalities better.
If you, if you have one that you catch in a trap and it's been chipped, but not spayed or neutered and not ear, ear clipped, will the homeowner have to bear that expense?
I don't know. We haven't addressed that yet. We've, uh, we've talked about it is, that, that when I talked to them, they said, you know, we check them for chips. They said they rarely have them, um, when they check them. I said, okay, well, what are we doing in the likelihood that happens? He goes, well, we would contact the owner and see what they wanna do. I'm like, okay. So, that's probably where we would go at that point and make a determination if we're going to go forward with that. Or the owner's gonna go and pick up the cat. Where they may say, go forth with it and release them back. Because we're gonna release them back to where, you know, where we, if we got them at ABC, that's where we're gonna take them back to.
Yeah.
So, it'll probably depend on, we're planning on playing that by year depending on what we get from responsibility from the vet when he's in the process of treating them. So, we're kinda not sure what we'll do with that.
And that, once again, that's to cut down on the feral cat population. And it may take a while for that to happen, sure.
I met with a couple of, uh, the Ellis County, uh, experts on that. They came and met with me about two weeks ago, three, four weeks ago. And they said, what you're, how you're doing it is the way you're supposed to do it. I said, you need to do it this way, this way, this way, because I've gotta buy some food, uh, get the traps ready, buy food. There are certain ways that you handle that. And they explained the best ways. And they kinda went a little far with what we were wanting to do because, um, I didn't wanna, some of, some of the things they were talking about were like keeping them overnight at your house. And I don't wanna do that. I don't think that that's, I think that's a, that's a burden. I'm not willing to go forward on that.
Yeah.
So, if we get them in early enough and pick them up late enough, they should be coming out of there. I mean, my pets have had this done and they seem to be okay, uh, in the evening. So, I don't know. I mean, I think they'll be okay.
If you trap a cat with a collar and a tag, what are you gonna do?
Good question. Um, the problem I found when I asked that question to this group that came and talked to me and gave me all these services, I said, so, what's the biggest danger to us? To us is trying to get this done? She says, biggest one is you're gonna get bit. And she goes, and she brought them, you know, if you got a collar or something, you may be lulled into a false sense of security thinking, oh, it's a pet. And so.
They can get mean.
They can get mean.
I know that dogs have to, you have to show that they've had the rabies shot and you get a tag from the city. And that tag IDs the dog to, to, to the owner.
Right.
Same process?
It should be.
Are they still doing that here?
It should be.
I hadn't heard anything about it in the last couple of years.
And so, she, she had a device that prevented, that would help. And I haven't, I haven't, um, pursued buying it yet. So, um, we'll see. Uh, if I need to go get that. It's a, it's a, uh, it looks like a, um, a small pitchfork. Almost. It's got a lot of teeth. It's metal. It's kinda heavy. And so, when, when a, when a cat's in the cage, you will slide, you'll put it in and get them to back away. And you'll keep moving it, sliding it, pushing them further to the back of the cage so that you can reach in and do whatever you need to do. So that they can't come out and attack. And then you can pull that back out, reset it. And, you know, like if you needed to lay some food in there. If there was something like that and they were having an issue, or you needed to retrieve something out of there, you could do that. So, and that's what she says. This is, this'll be your lifesaver because it's like a, it looks like a ray girl pitchfork. And you, you just, it's got a handle and you push it down into the cage. And then you'll keep, the cat'll keep backing up. You know, you'll pin them to the back and just hold that while you, you can do what you need to do. And the cat can't get out, can't bite you. So, that was neat that she had that device. That's something we may look at getting a couple of those. So.
You would need to because if you get scratch fever, you're in trouble.
Yeah. And she told me, she was like, she's been bit several times. And she goes, this has been the best thing ever, best money I ever spent. It's not that expensive. So, I'm probably gonna reach back out and see if I can get a couple of more, uh, once we get this up and running. So, um, so that was, that was good. It, we found a way to take this a little bit on that. So.
We had a friend that his, his pet cat scratched him on the leg. He almost lost his leg from cat fever.
Yeah, it's, um, my daughter has cats. I'm not real, real familiar with them. You know, she's got them, but, hers are very docile. So, you walk in, they, they find somewhere else to go. They don't come out with you. So.
They're antisocial.
Yeah, they're just, they're the, um, what is it? The, the breed? Is it the Siamese? Or whatever they call them? The, the color. They don't, they, they, she walks in, they'll go to her. They'll just sit there and look at me. They're anywhere near. Yes, we'll see how that goes. So, that's, I think, I think Cam posted that on the, um, website. Volunteers and stuff. And I've gotten a couple of phone calls. So, um, that should start up here at this time. So, you'll see that one. I'm not hopeful about the next one. I might have our first one done. And we'll see. And it's, I'll be a learning experience, honestly. Um, we'll see. So, what else?
You, um, mentioned a while ago about decibels and noise, noise in general. When they were putting in the subdivision behind our home over there on Water Street, uh, and they were pouring concrete for, for all the streets. They were pouring at two o'clock in the morning.
I must say, they'll do that in the middle of the night.
Is there anything you can do to assure us that that won't happen again? Because they broke ground today. They're getting ready to start putting in some slabs for the homes.
I drove over there and saw they were ready to put in, they'd done permits and got some slabs. And, um, I think, were they doing that in the summertime?
I, I think it was.
Yeah, summertime, um, typically they will do that in the middle of the night. But, um, in the wintertime, what I've noticed is they will start usually around seven AM or later. Which is not as bad. Um, so that's what I'm hoping for. I can talk to, uh, I can find out on that.
I know that, that they're more or less at the mercy of the, of the concrete company as well.
Yeah, a little bit because that's, I had some concrete poured a few years ago. And that's what they said is that we got three jobs and you may be first, second, or third. We're not sure. I said, how will I know? And they go, you'll know what time when we show up. And I said, what time do you start? And they go, we want four before seven, but we won't be later than seven oh two. Okay. So, sure enough, at six fifty-nine, they were sitting outside my door ready to go. And I was like, I guess I'm first up. And he goes, it just depends on where the jobs were. Because when they give them to us, they were talking to me earlier in the day. And they said, three jobs we get tomorrow, we will work from out in. He goes, we go to the furthest location and we work our way back to home, our base. He goes, so we don't know if you're the furthest one out. We won't know that until probably tonight at eight or nine o'clock. We can call you. And I said, I'm not worried about you calling. Just show up whenever. Well, they were, it woke us up. I mean, because they were loud.
Yeah.
And I'm like, well, I guess we're the first. So, but that was okay. It was seven in the morning. It wasn't, you know, three in the morning. So, I could live with that. Especially being a weekday. It wasn't a weekend. So, uh, most people were out and around going to work or whatever by daybreak. So.
You've got more houses down there now. And the streets were, where they had great big lots and pumper tanks and.
Yeah, that's a little different than a foundation.
I don't remember how many, um,
Truckloads.
How many trucks loads that they had coming in there. But it was a lot.
While, while reviewing the city ordinances, uh, I did see that from seven AM, you, you can't make noise from before seven AM or after seven.
Most ordinances are seven.
Or after seven PM.
That's why that guy told me, he goes, we won't be earlier than seven, but we won't be, we'll be doing it by seven oh two.
So, that, that wouldn't reflect on them pouring the concrete in the middle of the night?
Right. And so, a lot of times they'll get a, uh, they can get an exception in the summertime. And the reason, I didn't know this until I talked to a guy that poured it. He says, you don't wanna pour in the middle of the day in the summertime because of the heat. It's going to eat up your elasticity. He started explaining it all to me. He goes, so that's why you want it poured by midday. Well, ten, eleven o'clock, you want it, that truck to be empty.
Yeah.
Okay, makes sense. He goes, now, wintertime, it's just the opposite. We, we don't wanna go too late in the day because, and early, he goes, we kinda wanna be in that thirty-five to fifty-five range, you know, when you're in the, this, coming up in this time of year. What's it, next week's supposed to be fifty-five for the highs. He goes, so, we, that's a good time for us to pour. We can pour at any time. Because when you get the summertime heat or the January, February cold snaps, he goes, we're out. He goes, we, we just, we can't make it work. He goes, so, we tend to work with a clock back and forth in seasons to try to meet that. So, uh, a lot of times they could probably get a, in the summertime, a variance or an exception for X job or whatever to get it done. Instead of having to wait for months and months and months. It just, especially if they've paid for the permit, uh, they paid a lot of money for that. So, they would probably allow them to vary off of that ordinance of seven AM to accommodate the heat.
They're gonna put porta-potties out there because today there was a lot of men out there and they did not have one.
Unless they're gonna run into the, uh, road ranger, which I have seen them do. So, they could do that. Because I saw, I guess it was the Atlas trucks were over here. And then they had some that were, um, further up on, on Water Street. And they were going into the, uh, road ranger. They had three or four of them. They had, I don't know, maybe they were going bathroom or getting something to eat. I wondered about that too. So, but typically, when you do a, a job, it'll outline, you know, there has to be one porta-potty or two porta, depending on the size of the job or whatever. Or you must have, um, I think it was, uh, years ago, I had a contract to do some work on my house. And that was specifically stated, I would either have to allow them to put a porta-potty on the property, or they would have to be able to use my restroom where as needed, uh, during the process. It was like a, a two-week job. They were gonna have to do some renovation on this deal. And it was pretty involved. I'm like, yeah, I'm fine with that. Because I don't really want you, I'm paying you. I don't want you going up and chit-chatting at the QT or, you know, the road ranger for two hours. And I'm paying for it and it extends my timeout. So, so I was okay with it just to get through your job. So, a lot of times that's specified or spec, you know, inspecting the job. Uh, so, we, I can look at that though. And that was the one over here, right? I think that's, uh.
Milford Farms.
Milford Farms. I was gonna say Milford Meadows Farm.
It's had several.
Yeah, well, and then they want to do this one down here now on Bodark. And then they, there's one probably gonna come in over here now. And of course, the big one up over there. They have another meeting I think coming up. So, we'll see. So, I'll get that down here. I'll look and, uh, talk to them. Um.
Let's go back to speeding for just a second if we may.
Yeah.
Do you know if there's been any citations issued for speeding on East Water Street?
Uh, I know that when I look at the tickets, I look at the percentage on I thirty-five corridor. I know last month, well, the month before, we were just over eighty-three percent. Last month, we were, that was, September, October, um, we were at just over eighty-six percent on I thirty-five corridor. So, I know that eighty-six percent of them were on thirty-five or the stop signs out there. They were on something along thirty-five. Um, so that leaves me only thirteen, fourteen percent. And I know a lot of times it's on the stop signs here. They're working those. So, they'll catch them coming up and rolling. And typically, that's a speed. Typically, someone who's in a hurry, they come up and they roll through it. So, we catch them hitting the stop sign. So we catch them hitting the stop sign, uh, which is actually easier to prove than a speeding ticket. So speeding ticket, you got a sign that you gotta lay out in the court, right? So you gotta come in with your device. It's gotta be calibrated. It's gotta meet certain standards, which they do. But the stop sign, it's usually recorded on the camera. So. There you are. So, uh, so a lot of times they have been working. I know the stop signs coming off of Cross Lane and Water and all that. So. I don't, when I went down, y'all talked about the, the speed limit sign. I went down, the only speed limit sign I see is thirty-five coming this direction. And that's actually in the county, if I'm not mistaken. It's further south. As you go past, um, is that Hill Street? The last one down. And so there's a sign coming, I guess, west. Um, as you're coming out of the county, and it's thirty-five there. And that's the only sign that I've seen over there. Uh, but I've asked my guys to patrol it. And I don't think they've gotten any on it. And it could be the threshold that they're using. So typically, when we talk about a threshold and speeding, you typically want at least, uh, minimum ten percent over the posted limit. So the posted limit's thirty-five. I would round it to forty. And so you at least wanted it to be doing around forty miles an hour. Give you almost five miles, four miles an hour would be thirty-nine. It wanted to hit at least forty. So typically, uh, I like to get around twenty percent. Because the issue with radar, if you're doing radar, is you're gonna find that they're gonna allow for three or so miles per hour, two to three miles per hour. So if you're only riding at four, they can reduce your ticket, uh, and your, your ticket amount is up to ten miles an hour. It's a set rate. So over, so, uh, you have to be careful with it. To me, it's when you get into lower speeds, um. It's, it's, it's like a, it's like a school's all a little bit. It's, it's almost, it's hard to catch them at that speed that's gonna hit for a court proceeding. Cause they, they may only be doing, uh, three or four over. And that's barely the ten percent, which is what the court user likes, at least ten percent. So, but it looks fast in a residential setting, right?
Sure.
As opposed to out on thirty-five or even on seventy-seven.
Is, is there a standard how far apart they have to place the speed limit signs on the residential street?
Not that I'm aware of. It just has to be posted. So we had a complaint, uh, about a month ago, over off Old Brandon. And they were coming out of the timber thing down there. And at four o'clock, kids are getting out, walking out through there. And these guys, they're leaving that timber place was out in the county. They're coming north on Old Brandon. And they're, uh, Ms. Gates was the one that told me about it. She says, they are hauling coming out here. And I said, okay. Let me go down here and look. Well, we don't have a speed limit sign. Well, guess what? I can't write a speeding ticket till I get them. I've gotta have a notice to them.
Yeah.
You know, I can't win a case like that. The first thing it's gonna say is that, is it posted? And I, ain't as big as matter, can they see it? I don't have anything. They even went down into the county, nothing. So I'm like, so I found a, um. I went way farther down and it was thirty-five. And it was thirty-five going, uh, if you're going, um, that would be, I guess, east. So it's thirty-five going east. I said, well, let's be consistent. Let's get a thirty-five coming north so that they can't say we're trying to trap them with a five mile an hour difference. So let's keep. So I got swishing them to put a thirty-five sign right as I come off that curve. There's a house back there. And that house is in the city. So thirty-five as they come off that, so they can't say they didn't get it. Well, we ran radar. Charles was doing it and he got one. And just like good work that he did, let's don't just sit and write tickets for a week. Let's fix the problem. So you got one. He works at the timber place. So Charles brought in his tickets, went down and talked to the owner down there. And the owner called a meeting with the hall of staff while Charles was there. Had a chew in it. And he told me, he goes, if I catch any of you speeding out of here, if I get any word of it, these officers tell me, you won't work here no more. If your kids are walking down these streets, you obey the laws. It's thirty-five. We had had a problem since. Ms. Gates says, I don't know what y'all did. I said, we wrote one ticket and had a discussion. And that seemed to fix it all. So could we have sat there and worked it for two weeks and still got nothing done other than just a few tickets? Yeah. Go out on thirty-five and it happens every day, right? We can write a hundred tickets out there and I can write another hundred tomorrow. It didn't change. Behavior doesn't change. We were trying to affect behavior on this one because we knew a specific business that was our problem. And they wanted to be a good neighbor. And he was a good neighbor. He took care of that problem for us. So it worked out with just writing one ticket. So sometimes you can do that. Um, I've had, it's happened a few times in my career. So, um. Typically, it's gonna be, almost always be a residential street for that to occur. It will not be highway. You won't ever get that on highway. But yeah, so we're, we're aware of it. Uh, like I said, the one on West, we're still working on. And it was an AT.